Hi Judy. Hi Judy.
Hi, hi.
How are you?
Oh, I'm fine. I just finished getting the map organized a little better.
That's good. I'll mention that SBL. I must have just had a typo. I had it correct on the file.
It's just one number.
I know. Thank you for catching that.
I have a variety of ways of finding it and I always check the address to see if it's the right one.
No, that was good.
No, the one you sent actually doesn't exist.
Well, hey. At least I did well.
They're such irrational numbers. In the, maybe not in the mathematical sense, but in the logical sense.
I know.
Kind of a miracle to get any of them right.
But the dot dashes too, forget it.
Yep. When two rows of print keys don't agree with each other by a dot or a dash, which happens a few times.
Hi Peter.
Hi Peter. Peter, I'm right about the recusal, am I not? The recusal on James Gordon's thing? You're muted. You're muted. Still muted.
We might need Laurel.
Somebody has to give him permission, it looks like.
I shouldn't. Nope. He's good.
Down the right button.
Yay.
Yep.
Okay, yes Judy. The meeting that you attended about the Openshaw Meeting Law was really interesting. The most interesting thing was that we can actually go to site visits with the full planning board. I didn't know that.
Yep. He said he's gonna, well, they asked him about doing a meeting just on site visits because so many people had questions about it. And he was very surprised by that. But I think they won't do that.
But it's an interesting question because what they're saying is yes, you can have the whole planning board to look at a site, but not discuss it. But of course, that's what you're gonna discuss if you're looking at the site, so.
No, you can ask questions, but you can't indicate how your decisions might go.
Okay. Alright.
You are there to be a sponge.
Okay.
Connor may not be with us. He was gonna try, but he wasn't sure.
Okay, well, he has a report. He did, so maybe we'll get it from him.
I talked to him and sent you guys that email. I'm not sure if you read it, but.
Yeah, I did.
Here comes John. That means we have a quorum even if James has to recuse, right? Don't we have a quorum? Yes, Brian, John, Peter and me, so.
We do.
John, your background is very interesting.
He's muted too.
I sometimes put a background on it. They always look.
Very welcome.
About the background.
You've got something that looks like a standard icon for a JPG. That is overlapping your face.
How do I get rid of it?
Go into, by the video, there's an up arrow and then choose virtual background.
It kinda gives you a mystique, John, so maybe.
Oh, I hear Brian, okay.
Judy's on the world now.
Looked otherworldly there.
Oh, that looked too bad, but sometimes, you know, it sort of flips over your hair or does some other weird stuff. I don't usually use it. Oh, wait a minute.
Okay.
Oh, John turned his camera off.
It is now officially seven o'clock. And as Judy pointed out, we do have a quorum. There's Stuart. Hi Stuart. So, I would like to call to order the February 4 regular Zoom meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board. And Melissa, do you have any updates to the agenda?
I do not. You guys got everything.
Okay, so we have the minutes from January 21st, which I read because it was quite involved. But everything was okay with it. Does anybody else have any changes or additions to the minutes? And if not, I propose we accept them as so. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, under Communications and Announcements, we have an email from Sally Grossman regarding the Bearsville Center. And this particular email is regarding the burial plot and access to it right away, which is something that Alexander ought to pay attention to at this point. But we will get to that because it's in the agenda for tonight. And then we have the Aquifer Protection Year End Report from Ken Panza, which I've read. And I don't know if you've all gotten to see it.
Yes.
But he's basically laid out some items which are basically up to the town board to make recommendations or somehow incorporate into zoning proposed ideas for the Aquifer Protection. I don't know if anybody on the board has any particular questions regarding that. The one thing I did know he put in there was he questioned why the planning board suggested that we run the Woodstock sewer system up to that area, to the Bearsville flats. And the idea was, of course, if all those houses and all these businesses are directly over the aquifer, then perhaps we should give them, hook them into the sewer system. I also understand that there's enough sand in between the drain fields and the aquifer that it should, it should be okay. And Ken Panza's also reported that there are not high levels of nitrates in the system to worry about at this point, so. I guess that's where he's leaving it up to the town board to make some recommendations unless anybody on the planning board wants to add anything to that.
Just to mention that the NRI data includes wellfields, large water containers. I don't know where those are. So, you know, we've got new mapping information about that, better than what we had before.
Okay. Alright. So tonight, we have a public hearing, one public hearing and three sketch plan reviews. And then at the end, we have a motion to adopt a resolution for one of the cases. And then we have motions to adopt the resolutions for all the SDRs, which Melissa has worked hard on to get all this done. And then, of course, there's gonna be an update from Connor Wink regarding his site visit in the scenic overlay, which was the construction of a garage in addition. And then credits for Judith on the webinar for open government, which a very good one, and I would like to take it myself because I learned stuff, as we just mentioned, that we could have the whole planning board at the site at one time, which I didn't know. And then at the end, we have a presentation by Judith regarding the mapping of a critical environmental areas, which is part of the planning board's overall review of the comprehensive plan, which we're gonna try to do in segments leading up to our workshops. And there's several areas in the comprehensive plan we want to review. Critical environmental areas, the other. The other is, of course, scenic overlay, which Connor's been working on quite a bit. And there is a scenic overlay pamphlet available to everybody on the town website, which probably needs to be updated if we do go ahead and change some of the parameters, which is the 300 square foot parameter. And then, under the comprehensive plan that we need to look at as a planning board, is the build out part of it, how many more lots can be developed in Woodstock? And how the planning board should be looking at that toward the future.
Yes, we worked on that many years ago, as I remember, but it sort of petered out. If I can use that expression.
Yeah, well, we did, and the comprehensive committee did a tremendous amount of work. Paul was on it and they presented their findings. But part of the comprehensive plan is it's a living document and we're supposed to review it and update it as conditions warrant. And it's been a few years, I think it's five years now since the comprehensive plan was adopted. And the planning board should be looking at what updates we can provide for it.
Well, we may find that the NRI information is useful in thinking about that.
Yeah.
You know, delicate ecosystems and.
Exactly. Yep. Okay, so our first item is a public hearing, which I can't open the public hearing for a few minutes, but I can at least introduce it. And this is the Kerry Mellert, Christopher Donahue Jr. and Richard Suzanne Mellert Planning Board Case 20-0187A, which is a public hearing for a lot line revision. It's a complicated one, but it's quite well laid out. It's a lot line revision application to transfer 14 acres from Kerry Mellert, which is originally 24 acres, to the Donahue lot, which is originally two and a half acres. And two and a half acres to the Mellert lot, which is originally 11 acres. So we have three lots making a lot line revision. And that results in Kerry Mellert's parcel located at Mellert Road being almost eight acres and Christopher Donahue's Jr.'s parcel, the 29 Mellert Road being 16, almost 17 acres. And Suzanne Mellert's parcel, which is 4143 Mellert Road, ending up with 14 acres. So, we went through it before and the board got to look at it all and Christopher explained to us what it was all about, which was pretty much a family affair. So it's almost time to open the public hearing, but if Christopher is here, is Christopher with us? Yes.
Chris, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay.
Hi Chris.
Hi.
So before, I got a couple of seconds to open the public hearing, but could you please go ahead and explain again to the planning board?
The map here?
Yes?
Do you want the map?
Let him explain first. It's only two minutes before, so I'm gonna make a motion to open the public hearing for the Kelly Mellert application.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now Christopher, could you please explain to the public and the board what the objective of these lot line revision is?
The objective is, it's the original Mellert farm that was in Xena when my grandmother died. She left it to her four kids, my mother and her three brothers. That agreement was 45 years ago and the one uncle that was still living there was left the farm, but when he sold the farm or did something with the farm, he was supposed to compensate the other ones. He never sold the farm and of the four kids, three have passed on and now grandkids and everybody else is involved in it. So we're trying to come up with a way to satisfy the original agreement from 45 years ago. Kerry Mellert is my cousin. She, when her father died, he still had the 24 acres, so she wanted to keep eight acres that he gained. He wanted her to keep it. He used to call it Kerry's Woods. And since my uncle, I, and I bought of the land, we would take a portion of the land to satisfy our, or my uncle's piece of the land, but my mother's piece and my other uncle, his family is going to get compensated by money because I'm going to purchase the rest of the land from my cousin. And this is how the whole thing got divided up.
Okay. So, Melissa, is there any questions written or called in regarding this?
We had, two neighbors requested the file and Ben Bakash requested to be here. I believe he's here. If he has a comment, he can speak now. But there was no negative, nothing.
Yeah, I was just curious and nice to virtually meet some neighbors, so I didn't have the chance to, given the whole circumstance and living across the river. So, thanks for allowing me to be here.
You're welcome.
Okay, does anybody need to see the application plot? Because Judy can put it up if anybody needs to see it at this point, if there's any questions regarding it. If not, we can move along and now. Well, first of all, does anybody on the planning board have any questions regarding this application?
None.
Okay, so then I would move to accept a to accept this application as is because we have a resolution coming up at the end of the meeting.
Are there any members of the public that we haven't heard from that are on the call?
It was just Ben.
Okay, so I hear a motion to close the public hearing.
You'll hear it.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Okay, as I said, Chris, at the end of the meeting, we're going to vote on the resolution at the end of the meeting.
Chris, I'll be in touch with some paperwork and we'll talk next week or the week after.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, under Sketch Plan Reviews, we have a sketch plan from Anthony Niklock and Rebecca Chacklin in his Planning Board Case Number 21-1225. And this is a sketch plan review of a lot line revision application to transfer 4.9 acres, which is originally 27 acres, to an SBL, which was originally 30.35 of an acre, less than an acre, a third of an acre, establishing two new lots of 22 acres and 5.26 acres. There was a little lot of .35 acres is gonna move up to 5.26 acres in the R5 zoning district located at 180 and 182 Van Dale Road in Woodstock. So before I ask the applicant, I guess Catterskill Associates is the representative here.
We have, we have both. We have Andrade, we have Robin from Andrade Architecture and we have Martin from Catterskill Associates. Hi guys.
Hello everyone.
Alright, so before I get their input, I just wanna make note that the lot, the original lot, which is SBL 38.6-4-70 is a .35 acre lot, which I won't get into how that happened because how you can have a lot that small in a R5 acre zoning. But it is, and I'm gonna ask the applicants to present what it is they're proposing, but I also want Judy, if you could, to stand by to give us the Hudsonia map of this area.
Okay, well, I just have to do the share screen thing, which I can do right now.
Or, okay, that's fine.
And go to that map, which I have to do, so give me a minute.
Okay, so while you're doing that, let's see, have the applicants please explain to the planning board what their objective here is.
Hi everyone, I'm Martin. I'm from Catterskill Associates. We're the engineering and survey firm representing Anthony Niklich. And Robin from Andrade Architecture is here as well. Thank you for having us at your meeting. We are proposing a lot line revision between, like you said, a very tiny parcel and a much larger parcel, all owned by Mr. Niklich. The .35 acre lot is actually in the town of Hurley. And I believe that the way that it was created is because of where the town line runs. And I actually, I have a map. I don't know if you guys allow screen sharing. I have like a colored map of our subdivision that we're proposing, if that's easier for everyone.
Can everybody see what I've got up?
Yes, you have the main lot in yellow and it doesn't show the little tiny.
It doesn't show the little tiny lot, that's right.
It's okay. It's across the town line, that's probably why.
Yep. I thought, but it looks like I don't.
Yeah, it's okay.
Martin can share his screen if Judy gets out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd love to share my screen and show you guys our map.
It's fine. Actually, we both could, but I've never done that, so I don't know.
Oh, I haven't either. I thought you had to get out before you could get in. We learn new things every meeting, Judy.
Um.
Don't forget to click on the little blue button.
Alright, can everyone see my screen?
Yeah, there we go.
Alright, fantastic. So, right here, I have an inset of the entire parcel. So outlined in green are the property lines for the 27 plus or minus acre parcel. And then over here, connecting to Ryan Road is the .35 acre parcel. And then I've done a blow up of that area and what we're proposing. So currently, there is a house on this side here, this side of an existing wetland. That is the current residence on the parcel. What we would like to do is put in a property line in this general area and chunk off four and a half to five acres approximately and convey that land to this .35 acre parcel, which I've got highlighted in red. Which would bring that parcel up to over five acres. The intent of the project is to put a new house on this section of land. We've been out there. We have done a wetland delineation, water course delineation. We've done soil testing for the septic system, which has been witnessed by the Ulster County Department of Health. They've been out there. And we've actually come up with the design for the septic system. We are going to be proposing a driveway that comes in off of Ryan Drive. So we're gonna have to talk to the town of Hurley to get their permission for a, or permit to create this entrance. This driveway is going to need to cross a wetland in a couple of locations in order to make it back into this area. There's a small water course, more like a drainage ditch along Ryan Road, that has a little tiny bit of wetland. Then there's this larger wetland, which has a small finger in this area, which we'll have to cross. And then we are also crossing it at a very narrow point in the wetland right here to come up into an area that is suitable for a building lot. Actually, it's really nice back there. We were able to find conventional soils, which is in my line of work, very rare for septic systems. Usually they're all raised because we don't find much in the way of soil. So that's, I mean, that's our general proposed plan. Our purpose here tonight is obviously to get information from you guys. I haven't presented in front of this board before, so I'm sure that I have a little bit of a learning curve and I want to make sure that we we get you guys everything that you need in order to, in order to make a decision. I do have a couple of questions, but I'm open to answering any questions you guys might have first.
Okay, let me, before I turn it over to the board to ask questions, the first one, of course, that comes to my mind is the wetlands. And when were they delineated and by who? And that would have to be on the map of the data delineation and the licensed delineator.
Sure.
And those points would have to be on the map. In other words, the actual flags, one through whichever, indicating those wetlands would have to be on the map.
And just take note of that.
Yep.
I'm just noting that.
They or may not know, Woodstock has a hundred foot buffer around all its wetlands. So that buffer would need to be shown after the wetland flags are put on the map.
Sure.
And then the other thing, which is I was asking Judy to get ready on the on the Hudsonia map and on the county parcel viewer, it shows a creek, a small stream running very close, according to the parcel viewer, very close to the proposed development. So basically, we would need to see the delineated wetlands, the buffer and the stream on the plot. So at this point, I'll ask anybody else on the planning board to ask questions of the applicant.
Can I answer those two questions, sir? And I just have a quick question for you first. Our wetlands were delineated by Norbert Quinzer of Quinzer Environmental. They were done on October 22nd, 2020. We are in the process of finalizing our mapping. When we submitted this sketch plan, we did not have the boundary fieldwork completed yet. We have finalized the boundary fieldwork. We have finalized the boundary survey. I will certainly add all of the wetland flag locations to our final map. And our final map will include the the exact acreage that will be conveyed. This sketch was based on tax mapping because we were trying to get onto your agenda while we were completing all that fieldwork. And then, I believe there was the hundred foot buffer. We will definitely be inside of the hundred foot buffer. Actually, from this point of the wetland to the, it's about a hundred, a little over a hundred feet to the property line itself. I've actually got a 75 foot offset on the parcel here on the property line. So you can kind of get an idea that a hundred foot, we're definitely gonna be inside of that hundred foot buffer. And we'd love some guidance on the exact way that we go about doing that. I believe that that you guys have a process for that that involves
We do.
Someone from your town, as well as whether or not we'll need to provide mitigation and things of that nature. So if you could give us any guidance on that, that would be appreciated.
Okay, the first thing you would need to do is apply for a wetlands and water course permit application, which you can get from either the Building Department or the Planning Department. And that's a separate special use permit, which is a separate public hearing other than a lot line revision. So you would have two things going on. You have a wetland water course application and you'd have a lot line revision application. So, again, let me ask board members for their input that they have questions on in this case.
Well, I've got the map up here if you want to see it.
Could you please, yes Judy, the Hudsonia map?
Right.
Yeah.
And the only, I was, where I was at was we would need the, since they're proposing for a house, we would need the town of Hurley curb cut, right Peter?
Correct, correct.
And we would also need the Department of Health septic that paperwork also.
Right, those two things would be needed. Town of Hurley would have to be included in our application.
Yep. While he was asking what he needed, they were the two things that sparked my mind.
I had a question about that too. Because we are affecting property in the town of Hurley, will we also need to visit the town of Hurley Planning Board as part of this review? Will you guys be requiring that?
I'll let Melissa answer that because it's.
Okay, it all depends on the town. What I recommend is calling the town of Hurley Planning Board or emailing them and tell them that you've started the process with us. Explain that you're doing the wetlands and water courses also. What you're doing. You already started with us. If sometimes a town will sign off on it and send me a letter and say, "Okay, have at it. It's your lot line revision." Sometimes they won't. It's really their call, but you just have to contact them and get the information and something in writing for us and then how we can proceed.
I've done this a couple of times and it's always handled a little bit differently by every town and I wanted to make sure I had.
And I don't want to tell you it's clear sailing because with my luck, it won't be if I tell you that. But usually, usually us towns work pretty well together and we want you guys to do what you want to do, so we try to support you.
We appreciate it.
Okay, you can all see it.
The screen that Judy has up. This is the Hudsonia screen. And you can see that there's water courses and wetlands. Um, and you can see that there's water courses and wetlands uh adjacent to the proposed activity. So.
I think they're they're talking about right down in here and there is that stream. And I don't know what this one is. It's a different map, so things don't always line up exactly.
Right, right.
We did locate that stream, um, and I, if you don't mind me sharing my screen again, I'm I'm happy to show you my my AutoCAD file that shows that.
Sure, please, go ahead.
Okay, let me get out of this. I have the Hudsonia stuff and the NRI stuff and the New York Wetlands stuff all turned on, so some of it matches up, but there's one screen that doesn't. And it does look like your flagpole there runs across a wetland, but it's an existing lot.
Uh, can everyone see this?
Yep.
All right, just have to. I'm ill-prepared. One second. Clean it up a little bit for you.
You're making us all look like real novices over here.
I do this every day. Um, uh, you know, it's probably even better in this line here.
So anyway, to the point about the well, your delineation is current.
Yes, sir.
Only two years ago and and that is current. And they are a uh, a uh licensed uh wetland delineator, so tha- that's fine. Their name needs to be on the plot.
Yeah, and and we're gonna be, we're gonna have to do not only work with the town on the wetlands and water course permit, but we will be required to do an Army Corps permit for the disturbance for the driveway.
Yeah.
Norbert Quinzer from Quinzer Environmental, I do the design, we'll study the hydrology and make sure that, you know, what we designed for culverts and crossings will work. And then Norbert does all of the paperwork and submits all of that to the uh, to the Army Corps for the PCN under their, under their nationwide permit. Um, the question had to, I'm sorry, the question had to do with wetlands. As I said, we we feel located using survey, you know, standards. We went out and located all the edge of wetlands as they were delineated. That water course actually runs off the property in this area. And I I know it's a little tough to see, so excuse my drafting. It's not finalized yet. This is the water course here and it runs along this line in here. And we, I have a a hundred foot offset, which is this line. Um, that's a hundred foot offset from the, from the edge of the water. And we are, we are well beyond that with our septic system and our house location. Um, just so everyone knows, the wetland is this blue line that does come all up in here. The actual water course itself runs here. It runs off of the property, comes back around and then crosses the property way out in here. Um, you know, that's probably 500 feet, give or take, from where we're gonna be proposing any work as well.
But where are you actually cutting the new property line?
Uh, the new property line, I apologize, isn't in this drawing. Uh, just one second and I will.
Because this is the whole, this is the whole current lot, isn't it?
This is, this is the entire parcel, which, like I said, we were, we just finalized all of the all of the boundary stuff and did all of the fieldwork. This existing sketch is um, or that you guys have is based on tax mapping. Um, the existing water course runs, if you can all see this PDF, it runs right along here. We will be crossing that water course in the, in this narrowest point here. It's about five feet, give or take. Um, and then it runs through here and it runs this way. Uh, actually outside of our parcel.
Okay, uh, two points. One is, uh, yes, the water course has to be delineated and mapped on the, on the site plot. But the setback for the water course is determined by uh the Wetlands Water Course Administrator. And for that stream, I'm not sure what it is. It could be 20 foot or 30 foot. The hundred foot buffer is regards to the um County Board of Health as far as septic systems go. So there's two things going on. There's a water course buffer, which is a town uh made buffer, which for that creek, I don't know. It could be 30, 40 feet. Uh, but the wetlands have a hundred foot buffer. So one other thing that I have to add to Melissa's list is that we need to involve the uh Woodstock Environmental Commission uh to go to be involved in the site review.
Okay.
So um they would be also involved in the site review.
Peter?
Yes.
One of the issues here is that the information that we get in the maps is based on the county parcel, which is not accurate to the foot, as you know. So it may very well be that Mr. Martin's information is more accurate than what I see on my map.
I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is. And if it's been surveyed and delineated and mapped, I'm sure it's correct. So um, this is a preliminary uh sketch review for the applicant to know where to go next. Um, we obviously have significant wetlands and water course issues, uh, which will require, as I said, a wetlands and water course permit application.
I can email that to Martin.
That would be great. Thank you.
I I think the actual lot line revision itself is not an issue. I I I can, we can ask the board, but I don't think any buddy on the board has a concern about the lot line itself, where it's going. Our concern is development within wetlands and wetland buffers. And of course, crossing the stream requires a special stream crossing permit and it has to be done according to certain specifications. And as Melissa said, we have to involve the other town for the uh curb cut for the right of way.
Here.
Right away with the access.
This is Stuart.
Go ahead.
I have a question um for the, for Martin. Is the um, the road access for the uh new lot that is gonna be created that you're seeking, that goes out to Ryan Road?
So, so there's currently road access to this uh small .35 acre parcel. Um, you know, my my guess is when this larger parcel was created, someone created a 50 foot wide strip that went out to Ryan Road for future access. And then during tax mapping and town line creation and all that stuff, it got split off as its own lot. So that has access to Ryan Road. And then the main structure and uh that that exists now, the current house, that has a driveway off of Van Dale over here. So these would have two separate driveways um entering off of two separate roads.
Okay, and uh the new proposed lot that would have access to Ryan Road, would that, that that would be the exclusive road access for that parcel? There would be no uh access from Van Dale?
So far.
That would be, yes, that would be exclusive access. We are not proposing any, any easement, um, you know, like from from the other parcel.
And what is on the uh, the small, you know, that access parcel now, this small piece, what is on there now? Is there any paving or is it not developed?
No, it is undeveloped. It's just, uh, you know, raw land, uh, you know, tree, trees, little lightly wooded.
Okay, because it seems to me that our, any approval we might grant from this perspective would have to be contingent on uh you're getting whatever you need from the town of Hurley to guarantee, you know, access across that parcel for the house lot that you're looking to create. You know, they have to have access to emergency vehicles and so on. So that's a concern.
Yep. We actually, we listed, we listed the town early highway department on our EAF that we supplied to you guys, too, because we realized that we're definitely gonna have to get a, you know, a permit, driveway permit from them. They. People.
The Hurley, the town Hurley Highway you're talking about?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, are there any other members of the planning board have questions to be addressed at this point?
No.
And if not, then I say to the applicant uh through Melissa that the steps they need to take are getting the other town to um be involved and to get your wet, wetlands and water course permit application. And that's gonna be the most important. As I said, I don't think there's an issue with the lot line itself. It's gonna be a question of uh the wetland mitigation and the wetland application.
Okay, I have a quick question on that. You said that that will require a special use permit. I assume that that can run concurrently with the lot line revision?
Not necessarily. It could, but they're two separate public hearings. They're two separate uh issues. Um, could they be done at the same time? It's up to Melissa how she, how she can schedule things. Um, but uh, but they are separate. They're completely separate items.
Understood.
Peter, this is Stuart again. It probably would be beneficial if we get to the public hearing stage to run both of them together since they involve the same project, so.
Stuart, I agree with you.
Okay.
Um, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, so um.
This is Robin.
Hi, how are you? So this is more Martin's, I mean, Martin's handling is very well. Um, the existing house, um, we want to extend a space there uh for office space. Um, and that extension would be because that portion of the house, yes, thank you. Where's the 75 foot setback? Yeah. So you can see, um, you see that little extension? Um, the closest one to the property line in the back. There you go. We want to extend that out back uh 15 feet. Um, to make that, it's a very small space. It's like eight by 10. Um, right, yeah, exactly. That way in 15 going outward toward the back. There you go. Offset that 15, yeah. Um, what is the process for that?
That's actually through the building department. Um, you would go through the building department uh for a building permit and then they would have to deal with the setback issue if it needed to get a variance or not. Am I right, Melissa? I don't believe that would come before the planning board.
I don't believe it would come before the planning board either. I think right now, established in the lot line revision, taking care of the wetlands and water course, I think is really your first priority. I mean, I I don't know how you planned on jumping on, but as soon as we get all that done, yeah, I, it sounds to me like the building department, you just apply for a building department. You'd have backup, your water course, water permit, your maps and everything.
Great.
And then they'll tell you what you need.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if we had to go to the planning board for this at all.
Yeah, that would be.
I don't think so. The zoning enforcement officer uh knows the zoning much better than me. She's been here a lot of years. And she, she kind of, she um, what's the word? She gives us our cases. She refers us our cases. So, but to me, that sounds like it would just need building. I think what Peter handled definitely what you would need with the planning board.
Okay, I'll ask Ellen.
Okay, everybody. Is everybody okay with that? And we're gonna move on to our next case.
Martin, I will email you that tonight before I leave.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a sketch plan review. And it is actually a sketch plan review of um of reviewing a site plan review. So it's a Bearsville Center, specially used permit number 210141E, which is a sketch plan review of a site plan review application for site plan modifications to the existing site plan to modify uses of buildings in the NC zoning district located at 277 and 297, Tinker Street in Woodstock. And uh Barry Menbach is the applicant. Um, so let's, let uh, is Barry here or?
Yes, I am here.
All right, Barry, why don't you tell the board what your plans are?
Sure, and I just want to point out, I also have Heather here, my assistant, and Liz Van, the owner of the property, is also online. And her manager, Kim, is also here, so we're all available to answer questions.
What's Kim's last name?
Uh, what is Kim's last name?
Kim Locrow. Locrow.
Thank you. Keep going.
So uh, so the the um, the basic work, the most prominent thing we're doing here is we want to reorganize the parking and the access to the property, expand some parking. Uh, we reevaluated all the uses. Uh, there's a, there's some little changes of uses and we've come up with a new parking value. And um, and that's the, and then we're gonna put in the lighting, uh, you know, some drainage and uh awesome, also some handicap accessibility. So I don't know if we, if you have the map, you could put it up and I could kind of walk everybody through it, what some of the changes are.
Absolutely, just a second.
Okay, Judy does that, yep.
There you go. Can you see it?
Yeah, do you have my site plan map?
Um, probably. I have to find it, though.
Judy, I have it on my screen if that would be helpful.
Sure.
Am I able to share?
Yep.
Yes, Heather, please. Thank you.
Okay, it says I cannot start screen share while other participant is sharing.
Yes, I'll get out.
Okay.
All this technology.
Hey, I have two computers running because one of them wouldn't do video and one would, the other one wouldn't do audio.
Well, I always have to when I'm hosting because otherwise I can't see what anybody else can see.
I do a webinar. Sometimes I do, too.
All right, here we go.
Okay.
Thanks, Heather.
All right, so if you look at the darker area of the parking, uh, we proposed to pave that, uh, which I, anybody who goes to this facility or in climate weather will probably really appreciate that. Um, and uh, the, the, basically, the uh area, just kind of a loop connection with the adjacent parking around the central buildings, uh, will be paved. Uh, we're gonna create a new main entrance, which is um, yeah, Heather's pointing to it right there. There is a driveway there now, um, just a small incidental driveway that maybe is occasionally used. So we're gonna make that the primary two-way access. And what that does is it funnels everybody right into the main parking lot when you have a, you know, bigger event at the theater. Um, and then, but it also allows people to shoot over to, you know, park for the restaurant and that. We're also gonna eliminate some of the existing parking. If you look at that green area uh down at the bottom there, yeah, Heather's pointing to that. There's parking in there now. We're gonna eliminate that and took that into a lawn area. Then one of the goals is to create more of a, like a garden atmosphere, you know, uh, walking environment that's in that whole lower section there of the property. Uh, so we cut a little bit of parking out of there. But then uh we're reorganizing some of the other parking lot. We're adding a row of parking um right off the entrance, go up Heather, closer to, yeah, right there. That whole, that whole row there is, will be all new parking. And then, yeah, that too. And then uh, well, I think there's a little bit of parking in there, so that's certainly expansion. And also, there's a building there that'll be a maintenance building that we're proposing, that they can have lawnmowers and things like that. There's a little shed in that general area now that's totally inadequate. So this will be a bigger building that'll provide for uh site uh utility type of uh maintenance equipment. And then at the very bottom, off to the right, we're expanding the parking lot in into the wooded area there um to increase the number of parking spaces. Uh, some of the other improvements is uh, although the uh, the, the last site plan approved, I think in '04, had a dumpster enclosure that was never built. So we're actually expanding that a little bit and that'll be a more of a, uh, we, we have some architectural details of that. Uh, a nice, very secure, hopefully bear proof uh garbage uh receptor area. And then also there's a um, a proposed chapel. Um, that's just, would just be associated with use of the theater uh for different events.
Oops.
And uh, we lost the site plan.
Sorry, come back.
There we go.
Say ups in the operating room.
And then there's um, you know, some, some decks and handicap accessibility and things like that. Um, some of the uses, uh, the, the, I guess the Utopia Building is the only real building that's getting major changes in use where it was originally approved. It's just a studio where DST is now and they're in the process of completely moving out. Um, in the, that building's gonna have some studio space as well as offices. So um, we're in for a revised site plan.
All right, Barry, I guess first question comes to mind is parking. Uh, have you worked out parking uh numbers and?
Yeah, they're, they're on the map there.
Okay.
Start.
But basically you have parking adequate for all the seating that's.
Yes, and I, and I will point out, too, is that the uh, the theater itself, that we've had it completely reevaluated with a higher uh capacity than what was previously approved. So that added to parking.
Okay.
Um.
Where's the Grossman grave?
That is uh right there.
Okay.
We are preserving that and we're preserving the access to that. I know there's some little controversy over that. I believe, uh, because they put some of the outside dining area in that and to create isolation, they threw up a fence that crossed that, that may have blocked the, the actual right of way off. Although it really didn't stop people from getting to the grave. Uh, that will all be removed and, uh, reorganized and we have, we have, um, let me see.
The original right of way will be preserved is what you're saying, Barry?
Yes, it's right here.
Okay, so I know that, uh,
So maybe you can zoom in on that Heather a little bit, that area.
Figure out how to zoom.
I know Sally's big question was that she wanted that right of way to, to remain intact.
Can I speak about that? Um, this Lizzie Van here. Um, yes, we are absolutely going to preserve the right of way. We put up a temporary fence without any concrete in the ground in June because Governor Cuomo said we're only allowed 50 people on the grounds at any one point. So we had to count people coming in and out. And as soon as Governor Cuomo says, okay.
Sure, sorry.
No worries about access, then that fence will come straight down and it will not, none, none of it has affected Sally's access to the grave.
Okay. Uh, planning board members, do you have questions for the applicant?
Well, I guess I have one. Um, just because I happen to have been in the Peterson House at a point not, well, before I was, after I was disabled. You've got disabled parking right near it, but I'm wondering what the door is gonna be because that used to be the, the, the garbage access to the kitchen.
Yeah, well, that's all being revised handicap accessibility. Some it's already taken place. There's more. I'm not sure of the Peterson House. Um, architect's not here tonight. Who's working on that? Does Bradwell? May, maybe Lizzie, can you talk about that Peterson House?
The, um, the front of the Peterson House that fronts onto Tinker Street has an enclosed area that would be very difficult to do a handicap ramp into. So the solution that we've come up with is to go in the corridor between um, the bear and the little bear and the Peterson House is to put a ramp in there that takes, that, that goes into the side of the Peterson House there and gives access to the whole of that floor.
Okay, I see. On the side there?
Yes.
The, the lower.
Yes, you're seeing it there. Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
We, we have, um, some architectural details of this that we didn't submit yet. Uh, we can.
Oh, we did. Oh, well, some of them we did. Oh, no, for the bear. I'm sorry, bear.
Yeah.
It's a very important thing for me that we do have accessibility everywhere. So this is something that we've embraced at every stage and each one of these seven buildings has had a huge amount of work. So at each point, we have been thinking about bathrooms and accessibility.
Yeah, I know the, the theater was actually pretty good even before. I was.
Yes.
I also know your, your contractor, Jesus, he's done a lot of work on my house.
He's a good man. He's a good man.
Yeah, I might point out, Lizzie has done an extensive amount of work on the buildings over the last, uh, probably more than a year now, right?
Year and a half.
Year and a half, uh, extensive amount. Every time I go there, there's contractors all over the place upgrading, you know, the plumbing, the heating, the insulation. There was some, uh, deterioration, you know, rotted lumber and, you know, they're just doing everything there. I'm totally impressed. The property, uh, you know, obviously has been neglected for a long time. And Lizzie has put quite an effort into bringing it back to life and really wants to, you know, bring it back into the community and make it the center, you know, it once was and maybe even more. And, and, and in that note, we had submitted only, um, yesterday or today.
Today.
Summary of, um, how her goals, uh, come match up with the town of Woodstock's, uh, master plan. I don't know if that.
I read that. I read that. Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, so, you know, just to kind of give you a feel of where she's going with this, you know, she really just wants to focus on the arts, the performing arts, you know, the visual arts and, um, and, and really make this a center for such activity.
So from the planning board's point of view, as far as the site plan goes, our, our, our main concerns normally are parking. And the issue is, is when everything's going, if the theater is going and the restaurants are going and everything's going at once, is there enough parking? Because you all may know in the past has been parking out on the highway.
Yes, I know that.
That's not gonna be good.
I've been there.
We want to, we want to dissuade that and that's why we've created more parking. So you can see on the site plan. Um, we've, we've absolutely created enough parking. Might be that on a, on an evening for the theater being open and the other buildings being busy, we may need to run a little golf cart down to the bottom lot to.
Right, right.
But the, the land, I mean, there's 16 acres here, so. Maybe we don't want to go into an area that we don't need to, but we have, we do have that other space that we can use for car parking.
Okay, so I won't.
Just to, uh, to point on that. So originally it was approved for 261 parking spots and we're proposing what, 300?
83, I believe, 383.
So we're adding over 200 parking spots.
Okay, so I'm not gonna go into it now, but we'll, we'll double check the figures to make sure we're, we're good on that. The other issue, of course, for the planning board is lighting and that we don't, we want dark sky compliant. We don't want lights going out on the main highway, which should be distracting.
We, we completely redesigned the parking lot lighting, which you can, um, see, we, we sent a photometric.
Okay, you did. Okay, great. We'll review that.
Peter, it's Brian. Before you go to lighting, I have a question about parking, please.
Sure.
Just curious, um, given the pavement and the expansion of the parking lot, could you folks talk a little bit about water runoff and, and issues associated with that?
Sure. Yeah, well, we, we haven't, um, we haven't provided any real design yet for the stormwater. We wanted to talk to the planning board about the runoff. Uh, we're gonna, and you know, we're gonna have to obviously accommodate the expansion of parking. But I will say that the existing parking lot, um, it, even though we're adding pavement, it's, you really look at the existing surface as impervious. You're not getting any penetration or subtracting the water except for maybe during the driest conditions when you get a small rainfall, maybe you're getting some absorption into the subsoils. But so, so the parking lots now, uh, pretty much are impervious. And, um, we are adding some impervious. We will account for that. We will provide the, um, the, the proper stormwater and the calculations to support that. But I, I will say we haven't done that yet. We wanted to first come in with a sketch plan and talk to the planning board about the overall plan, number of parking spaces. And then we can follow up with the detailed engineering, uh, once, uh, we get some feedback from the planning board.
Thank you.
I've got a follow-up question on that.
Go ahead.
Here I see existing gravel parking area to increase. Are you going to be using gravel for most of that?
Yeah, the, the, um, the dark shaded areas will be paved and the other areas will be a crushed stone. We call item four. It's a, it's a nice compacted, you know, has a hard surface to, to it sort of, you know.
But it's permeable to rainwater, which is important.
So, you know, so all of this stuff has a little bit of permeability, but when you actually do the drainage calculations, you just assume it's all impervious because eventually it all clogs up and will be impervious. You know, even when you use big open stone, you know, you, you put sand down in the winter for ice and, um, it all clogs up all the parking lots. And if you look at the state stormwater regulations, you have to consider gravel areas that was impervious. You might get initial subtraction and some absorption, but you really, you know, you still, it's still running off. You know, you get big storms, it pretty much all runs off.
Those green areas could be rain gardens then to.
Yes, that's exactly what we would look to do. Not all of them, but, uh, yes, the strips in between the parking lot, they would definitely be, as you called, rain gardens. We call my retention. But, uh, the same thing. And, uh, we'll, we'll probably have to create a little bit more than that down at the, uh, lower end of the property there. Uh, just, uh, in, in, I can't, I can't, I can point it on my screen, but you don't know where I'm pointing to. So Heather, at the, at the bottom of the existing parking lot, um, yeah, along that strip there and then further up into there, they're, they're all in that area. There will probably do some retention. There's also some, um, if you walk the property now, there's some like, you know, you have the river stream there, uh, there's a flood plain and there's overflow river areas that are kind of like natural. Um, they're almost recharge areas because there it is quite gravelly. And so the, you know, water that runs in there will recharge. You know, you wouldn't be creating wet ponds or anything. And, and while we're talking about that area too, we're also showing, uh, some access trails through the woods. So people from the parking lot aren't necessarily have to walk through the parking lot to get all the way back to the theater, but there'll be some, uh, nice trails. And, um, we're talking about putting some monuments along there that, um, maybe, uh, Lizzie could talk about a little bit.
Well, we just had a number of people approach us since I bought it and said, you know, my husband had a wonderful time here or this is a very special place to us. So, um, people like Ted Orr, who passed away, his widow, and also Jeremy Wilbur's widow. And I said, well, I would love to put maybe a small plaque up, um, not a gravestone. They're definitely not interring bodies, but just something to mark, uh, various people that have enjoyed Beersville in the past. And it just seems, uh, it just seems to be a nice idea. So we're just asking for permission to do that. Uh, I think five, we designated five sites along those woodland walkways.
Okay. Uh, to answer Judith's question about, uh, the drainage runoff, from the lower parking area uh, to the creek, there's actually a berm that the town put in years ago along the creek. So there's a, a low area there where water can settle um, and not go directly into the creek. So as far, again, as far as the planning board, the issues that have come up, number one, is Sally's, uh, concern to make sure that the Grossman grave site and the buffer area and the right of way is preserved as it was originally laid out, which you've assured it is. And that's, we just want to make sure because she's asked.
It will be, it is and it will be. The only problem has been this temporary um, directive to only have 50 people in the garden. So we've had to put a fence up.
Okay, so that'll be corrected and that's great. The only other issue as far as planning board that I can think of is any new development within the hundred foot buffer of the creek, which might require of, of, a well and water course permit, something that we'd have to look at depending on what kind of, uh, development it is. Um, so that's something that, uh, I think that, uh, the engineer can later on explain to us if it's, if it's something that does not impact the bank, it's probably okay. Obviously we're concerned about the stability of the bank, so.
Yeah, I think it, I think those only areas is where we're expanding some of the decks, existing decks right up against the building.
So that's just decks.
Yeah.
Decks, right? No foundations and stuff like that.
Um, no, no foundations. It was very interesting. One of the things that we discovered, and I should tell you this because we've done a lot of work on drainage, a huge amount that I didn't anticipate around each building. I found that there's so much water, there's a high water table, there's runoff coming down, um, Route 212. And then there was the roof, the water coming off of the roofs of the building without gutters going into the basement. So we've actually trenched around each and every building and created a stormwater system around the buildings that goes off down into the woods. So we, we have been doing our best all this way through. And, um, the only thing we want to do, oh no, I know, what I was gonna tell you is, one of the things we discovered as we were going along the back of the theater was a big concrete area that was 15 feet by 50 feet long. We didn't know what it was and we asked, um, John Storick, the original architect to tell us. He said, I don't know anything about it. And then we asked around and we found out that Albert Grossman had built a bunker, um, to put things in. And, uh, if you, if you took some more soil up, there was a huge, great iron pin um, that you needed a virtually a tractor or a digger to lift up and it, it revealed, not a staircase, but just a big hole in the ground that I went down with a flashlight.
This is the first one to hop in.
It was a little exciting and there was nothing there. It was just plastic sheeting. Uh, there was about 10 feet of headroom. But great big rooms that were intended for something else. Anyway, the, the reason I'm telling you this is there is no need to put down any foundations. All that we need to do is, uh, put a deck that rests on that concrete.
Okay. Well, again, those issues are really the building department and really the planning board just looking at the site plan itself, not the construct, not the buildings or construction or engineering. Um, other than, as Judy brought up, you know, uh, make sure that the, the water is screened off. So does anybody on the planning board, any other members of the planning board have questions regarding the site and the use?
Stuart here. I just have a question on reading the plan. There's an area behind the little bear and then the, says Bear Cantina, I think. Um, where there's, right, where you're moving around the cursor and there's these dotted, uh, kind of markings going from top to bottom, right where the cursor is.
Yeah.
What are those markers?
They're contour lines.
They're contour lines?
Yeah, yeah. There's two feet of elevation in between one set of, each set of lines.
Was that the drop?
That shows the embankment down to the stream.
The little bear is right above the stream. I mean, it's a steep bear.
All right. Thank you for that. That's it.
Yeah, that, yeah. So that area basically represents the bank of the stream.
Right, right. I know that, you know, when I used to go over to the, the, the Bear Cafe and it was a heavy rain, a lot of the rainwater would end up kind of right where I was sitting.
Well, that's, that's what Lizzie was just saying. She fixed, fixed a lot of that.
Yeah.
Covered a lot of that, especially in the basement.
Yeah.
Yes, but I've, I've read Liz's, uh, description of her trials and tribulations, uh, repairing and fixing the place and everything she discovered along the way. There were also some notes from the building department, which again is the building department's issue. But, uh, I, I could, I think I'm speaking for the whole planning board. We are great and happy to see this site rejuvenated and, and put back into life again. So, uh, we, I think the whole planning board is glad for that. Um, and this is a site plan review. If nobody else on the planning board has any issues over the site plan, then I suggest that, uh, Melissa can put you on to the next stage.
That's great. Thank you. I, I would like to say that we are determined to do everything right and we're really here to listen and to have your guidance. We've done a lot over the last 18 months since I bought it. The day I bought it, there was water coming through the ceiling and down the walls. So the first step was to stop the water. But, um, we've done a lot since that time and now we're ready for this stage. So we will absolutely work with you and make sure that it's the best it can be because we can't afford to let it deteriorate again. It's, it's a tough building plot to work on.
Can I make a suggestion? And this is, this is not, I think, anything that the planning board would enforce, but where you have marked reclaimed as lawn. Uh, the problem with lawns is that they are very high users of both labor and chemicals. And you might want to consider something a little more in the way of natural, natural middle lands with walking paths.
Yes, I would love to do that. I'm a very organic person, so I have no intention of using any lawn chemicals.
There are, there are not a lot of people around here, or at least several people around here who could advise you.
Yes. And similarly, we have a leach field at the bottom of the car park that, um, I am determined to utilize and to make it a very beautiful, uh, area of reclamation.
So very.
Peter, can I ask you, what is our next step here with the planning board? What we should be, um?
This is the preliminary site plan review and since the planning board has not brought up any major issues, uh, I think the only thing that, and you've addressed it all, I just, we haven't gone over it in particular, is the lighting to make sure that, as you said, it's all dark sky compliant or not shining out on the street that is contained within the, in, within the property. Um, that the parking lots have lighting enough to see where you're going. And, uh, and that there's enough parking for, for all the activities. That's basically what the planning board would be looking at. Which it looks like you've covered all of that. I just, I haven't gone over the exact numbers yet, but I'm sure we will and I'm sure they're correct. So I, the next step would. So I, the next step would either be a second sketch plan review if Melissa thinks that's necessary. Or put it onto a public hearing. That's.
Planning board?
Public hearing.
Have to go, they're gonna have to go through the building department. So it's really up to the seven, well, the few of you that are on here. Six of you that are on here.
I think we also need a county advisory opinion.
Because it's near state highway. But I, parking, maybe parking would trigger it to the county. Again, I'd have to check with Melissa on that. I'm not sure what would trigger it, but we'll, we'll check and make sure if it needs to go to the county or not.
I, I have a question, Peter, in terms of the main driveway that's entrance, it's going to be created. Is that going to be an expansion of what's there now? And you're going to need new curb cuts for that?
Yes, we need DOT approval for this. We, we just sent the plan to them. We haven't gotten it just recently. So we haven't gotten any feedback yet. But I'm sure they're going to be happy with it because, you know, we're replacing three driveways with two. One of them is going to be full access. One of them is going to be enter only. And really the, the one, I guess at the western end is going to be really reserved mostly for just deliveries and, and staff and things like that. And it'll be closed off during special events. And so the main entrance will be the other one. So I think DOT will be very happy with the improvements we're doing here. We do need a permit from the Department of Transportation.
Yeah, good point, Stuart. Good point that the driveway.
Hold off on the public hearing. Barry, you know, you know, need to get us, it sounds like, right? We're good?
And you, I think we're going to need county advisory opinion. I'd like to get that moved in if we can.
Absolutely.
Okay. So Liz, you're doing a great job and I can speak for myself as a local and John, I'm sure is tuning in here.
Yeah, I would like to thank her for the incredible work on the site because it does matter to us.
Yes, if we've, you know, people have told me it's the heartbeat of the town, so we've got to get it out there. I remember I used it a lot myself and I would like to address that parking that happens along Tinker Street. So I'm pushing for parking down there. But you know, we can only use the parking when we get through this pandemic. I'm kind of desperate to get, get people, get people there. It would be a lovely problem to have, to have lots.
Yes. I'm looking forward to giving a reading at the Peterson House with the Golden Notebook.
Oh, that will be wonderful. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We can't wait.
So it's, it's quite a, it's quite a, it's quite a parcel to us. I, I used to date one of the Peterson girls out of the Peterson House. A little bar that Bernard has, which was the original, which was the original cafe there. So it's got quite a history and we're glad you're keeping it going.
Lizzie, if I could just offer a suggestion, the next time you go claw me down into an unknown crypt, wear a hard hat, please. There was, there's a movie on Netflix now that I recommend called The Dig. I don't know if anyone's seen.
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
Quite lovely and has some interesting scenes about exploring such spaces.
So, so county approval. Or go to the county, get the county involved and Melissa will keep everybody informed.
Lizzie, at whatever point you want advice about gardening, ask Melissa to put you in touch with me because I can suggest a couple of people.
I would love that. Thank you. I will do that tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all very much. Thanks, everybody. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, we have now a, another sketch plan review. And this is for 105 109 Mill Hill Road LLC Special Use Perimeter 21-0162D. And this is a sketch plan review for a site plan review application for modifications to an existing site plan to operate a sushi restaurant. What's that? In the R1, in the R 1.5 zoning district located at 105 109 Mill Hill Street in Woodstock. And this is being represented by David Fletcher. So David, why don't you first tell us what you've got in mind here?
Hey, I'm super excited to be here. I've been a Woodstock resident for most of my life and yeah, this is, this is a great opportunity. So yeah, we, we have an idea to start a sushi restaurant out of the Red Barn. I currently am one of the partners for Woodstock Drop, which is a delivery service. So our goal is to get started primarily for delivery and pickup, 100% delivery and pickup at first. And yeah, see where it goes from there.
Okay, so there's no changes to the exterior of the Red Barn, is that correct?
Well, we, we did propose some changes, but there will probably be even less changes than we initially proposed.
Okay, the only reason I bring that up is that involves two other committees. One, of course, is the Gateway District because you're in the Gateway. And the other is Civic Design, if there's changes to the exterior. So if you have changes to make in, in exterior.
David, did you submit the application to the Civic Design? I had a copy of that. Did you submit it to them?
This is Mark. Yeah, so I, I put it in the folder, everything to you. I didn't know that I had to send it separately to them.
I assumed you would send it to them. Okay.
Okay. And the only, the only change that is really proposed is to update the windows. Everything else on the outside is going to stay the same. The roof stays the same, the, we'll repaint, but with the same color, it'll stay exactly the same color. But those are old funky windows and we'd replace them with newer, better windows. But beyond that, it would be the same.
Okay, so just so the board knows, of course, we're talking about Cucina or the Oldini's Restaurant. And just so the board's aware of that the last time we went through a change at the Red Barn, we ran into quite an obstacle. In fact, got sued in Article 78. And it was pretty much over the parking. So the issue that we want to make sure is very clear is that the parking spaces are correct for both the restaurant and the barn. And what happened last time was we just had a kind of a walk around the parking lot in which one of the board members said, oh yeah, it looks like all the cars will fit. And we got into a technical issue over that. So there are existing plans of that parking lot. And it, 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 it's up to the board, but we might want to see a really delineated parking spot to show that there's enough parking spaces for both the restaurant and the Red Barn. Because as I said, we went to an Article 78 over that a few years ago.
So at, at some point, we, we, we would want to have more extensive parking, but initially the plan is basically like for, for people just to come and pick up and leave. So like, nobody would, at least at first, be parking for dining.
Right, okay. Because originally it was an extension of the restaurant. It was for weddings and whatnot. So there was extensive parking needed, which would be different than what you're proposing. So I just, we just want to make sure that we've got parking covered. All right. So board members have questions regarding this?
Well, just to say, planning ahead and thinking about when you might be able to do eating in would be a good idea.
Yeah, if I could say one thing, Sally has committed to extending the parking lot in the back at such time that that would be needed to add the necessary spaces to make sure that we would meet whatever criteria the town needs for those parking spaces. And I believe she, she has the setbacks to do that, at least.
That was precisely the issue that we ran into.
I remember.
But the issue is that there's a neighbor behind that space that does not want to see a lot of lights. So whoever do expand the parking there, please consider buffering that or, or, or somehow.
Without a doubt.
Yeah. That's what got everything going last time.
I remember. It was painful.
Yes. You're muted.
Dog barks all the time. I'm sorry. At this point, you're not planning for any indoor, outdoor seating in any capacity?
No, like I briefly mentioned, I have a delivery company right now. So we're like the, the delivery part of Cucina's, for instance, right? And so a, a lot of the business that we're going to do will hopefully through that. And then we also want to accommodate for people to come in and just pick up food and take it home with them. We think it's very appropriate for the current COVID time that we find ourselves in. And at some point in the future, we'd like to potentially reexamine that, but it would not be a right now thing.
And Peter, when that happens, that it becomes a secondary approach to the planning board to go over all that?
Well, I, I think at the moment, and we'd have to check with the building department and with Sewer and Water, I believe that they have been okayed for restaurant services in the building.
But in terms of like what the parking would then have to accommodate or whatever?
If, if they wish to have seating inside, we would have to review the parking, right? Just to make sure we don't get in that jam again.
That's why I'm trying to avoid that for you, so.
It would be a site, the site plan modification, right?
Correct.
Well, but right now, what he's proposing is what's on the table.
Okay.
Stuart?
But what he said initially was that they're not, they're not presently going to do any indoor dining or seating, strictly going to be, I guess, prepare food and ship it out with the delivery service. Is that right, David?
That is correct.
Right. So that's the modification, but implicit in that is that at some point in the future, perhaps after COVID restrictions go away, they might well want to do that. So it has to be made clear whether the present modification is going to be limited only to delivery service, dining in.
That's why I raised the issue.
Secure the right to do in the future, they're going to have to come to grips with the, with the proper parking.
That's why I asked. I just wanted to make sure there was a stopgap for we revisit this, so we make sure we don't have any parking traumas later.
I believe that Cucina has been approved for the Red Barn as a, as a banquet of wedding venue.
It was.
Approved for that.
It was.
I just, in that approval, I think the issue was it wasn't adequate parking. But that never, the lawsuit didn't go on, but we don't want it to happen again. That's all.
Okay, so our referral from the CEO, which I think is going to answer a few things, is modification to the site plan regarding hours of operation and required parking. So that's how Ellen wrote it up.
Who, who's, who's operation? Is it, is it Cucina and the Red Barn or is it just the Red Barn? Is this Cucina's application? Whose application is it?
So I'm, I'm the name on the application, but Cucina is working in concert with us.
It's 105 to 109 Mill Hill Road.
Does that include the Cucina building as well as the Red Barn? 105.
I believe it's all one property.
Yes.
Right, so Cucina, right, Cucina has some dining operation now. So I don't want to stay confused about the parking requirements. Whose parking requirements are we talking about? Is this going to be the delivery applicant? Or is it also going to have to include whatever is required for the Cucina operation?
Right, well, that was the original issue with, there had to be enough parking for Cucina's total restaurant and additional parking for the Red Barn's banquet.
That the lens that we're going to be looking through on this, both, both pieces?
The, the sushi entity certainly wouldn't like at, at any point infringe on like the max capacity that was like that was for Cucina, right? So like they, they would come first when it came to parking.
Well, in other words, you have two buildings there. If they're both reach the point of having full interior dining, dining in, that would set the maximum for the parking. That would set the amount of parking that we would have to require with it. If there's dining in in both buildings, that would be the highest number.
May I ask a question, Peter?
All right, yeah, John.
Who owns the whole property?
Adler.
Adler. And it's its own residential.
Sally. So we have a situation there where the zoning behind the building is residential? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And, and the building, and the Cucina itself is residential.
That I never understood, but that the issue then was whose name should be on this application?
Well, it should be Sally as the owner, but that's a technical question, John. I don't know.
Melissa, do you know?
When somebody is a rental, like Garden Cafe, for example, when you're renting space from another owner, isn't the operator of the business the one that applies?
Right, Ellen and Mark and David. What I have is Nancy Adler, who is 105 to 109 Mill Hill Road LLC.
That's right. And she, I believe authorized David as her representative.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a written authorization?
Really talking about the entire parcel then, which includes.
Well, it's all one piece, Stuart.
Yes.
There's two buildings with capacity, so that that you have to measure the parking against the capacity of both operations.
So can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so this is, I'm the owner, Johnny. And so practically Cucina is his own restaurant. The barn right now, we are not doing anything because we don't have any catering. And typically we do about 10, 15 catering per year. And that's where we need a parking lot. And when we have more than 40 or 50 people, we usually have a valet parking who take the car and pass somewhere else and not in the property. Now, the sushi place will be under the umbrella of Cucina to facilitate this. And as of now, is only a to-go, pretty much people can't pick up and go. So there's very minimal parking. Now, on the back of the building, if you see the piece of land that goes all the way down to the other house, it's pretty much a place that Nancy would be willing to expand if we need an extra 20 cars. But as of now, we are not looking that far because we don't know when we're going to start being fully, in full capacity. And also the right part of the building, when you walk into Cucina, if you notice the right lot where there is no gravel, asphalt, there is more space than car can be parked down the road close to the line of the golf club property. There is a way, if, if the parking are redesigned, you can probably put an extra 20 or 30 cars. But that's something that, you know, eventually if this sushi goes through, I'm going to talk to Nancy and trying to develop. And I'm sure she's very open to the idea. So that's my saying.
Okay, but the issue is that that is a site plan change. And that parking, if you expand the parking, it needs a site plan review to do that. Because right now, the parking is not that clearly delineated. And as you said, the parking, the, the overflow parking for the golf course is on their property.
No, no, but we will not go to their property.
Okay.
There is a big parcel there that right now, people don't park the car.
Right. So I'm just saying that if, if, if parking is, expanded parking is, is, is anticipated, it will require a site plan review.
Yeah, we will probably get there and spend more money once we see what the sushi place is going to do. Because probably the sushi place will only require three or four car at a time. But people come in, pick up and go. We are not planning to seat people inside or anything, even though we have a 60, 60 seats inside the barn right now.
Okay, so other members of the planning board have questions? This is a preliminary site plan review. Do members think we need to look further at it or let Melissa do some scheduling?
This is Brian. I have one question, please. I'm sorry. You want to go, James?
Oh, no, I was just saying, I think, go ahead, but go ahead, Brian.
Okay. In the, in the barn and the sushi takeout places, there are going to be any indoor.
In the barn and the sushi takeout places, there going to be any indoor seating? Not at all at first, and yeah, it's our intention to maintain the whole takeout slash delivery aspect for quite some time.
Okay, the planning board just wants to make sure that you guys know, as soon as you change that, you have to come to us for a site plan.
Yes.
We have to update the site plan, right, planning board? That's what we're trying to stress.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Do you think we could combine? Do you think we can combine takeout and immunization service at the same time?
Yes.
And a shot?
You might have sold me now.
A shot and a beer.
That's right.
Okay, Melissa, so your call, what we should do next with this case?
Has a little public hearing?
Everybody's comfortable with it, then we should.
Planning board?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Mr. Fletcher, I will be in touch next week, we will discuss a time and a date.
Fantastic, I look forward to it.
Thank you all.
Okay.
He has a question, but he's very quiet tonight.
Is there a full kitchen in the barn?
Well, right now, right now, there's a satellite kitchen that helps for catering, but the plan is to put a very small, maybe a fryer just for tempura, but it's pretty much mostly sushi, shiitake, that's the idea. So if we have to put a hood, that's, we have to see what the building department, the permits, and see if it's allowed.
This will go back to the building department before they're up and running, and will be inspected and approved.
Okay, all right, everybody.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project.
Time, everyone.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Take care.
Okay, so now we have an update from Connor, if he's not here, then we don't.
He's not, did anybody see my email? He had talked to me a little bit. I guess I can just give you the update, we don't have Connor, right?
No.
Okay, so Connor went, everything went really well, he said that there wasn't really much to worry about. Greatin Yurik, the representative, has also sent me some specs and the drone photo, so what we're going to do is we're going to get him back, I have him coming the next meeting, just to go over that, and then Connor will be here and can tell you himself that he doesn't have any problems, and hopefully after the second sketch plan, we'll move forward.
Sounds good.
Connor, you're thanking.
Can I interrupt, I want to interrupt just for one quick thing? I have a friend coming over sometime in the next 10 minutes. I myself still can't do things around my house, so he's coming over to help me do some things because of my foot, so I might have to leave the meeting, do you still have a quorum if I have that happen?
We do.
We do.
Thank you for letting us know.
Okay.
We're sending you healing vibes.
I just don't want them waiting around, it's just like stuff like taking a load of laundry.
Healing vibes.
Healing vibes.
You know, it's just stupid stuff.
Okay, so Melissa, as far as Connor's site visit and everything went, it's going to, we need to approve the site plan at some point, right?
Yep, so I'm bringing them back, and you guys can, the whole board will see the drone photo and the area of disturbance, and then we'll let Connor talk about it a little bit more, so they'll be back for a second sketch plan with a little bit more information, and we'll move forward.
Okay.
That's next meeting.
So the next issue is to make a motion to approve the credits to Judith for attending the webinar on open government planning and zoning decision making.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, I just mentioned to the board, if you all weren't here at the time, we talked about it, was one of the things that was, that was in that presentation, is the fact that planning, the planning board can go with site plan, go to a site inspection, the whole board can go, we always thought it could only be, couldn't be over a quorum.
Quorum, yep.
So we used to schedule all these different schedulings, so we never had a quorum there, and apparently you can, as long as you don't talk about what you're looking at, so.
The way that he worded it was, be a sponge, you are there to learn not to judge or make opinions.
I'm in the middle of doing that webinar, do I just contact you when I've finished it and let you know? Okay.
Send her the certificate, and then
Yep, the email.
One afterwards, even if you're doing it posted, having done live?
That's fine, I have, I have a lot of the stuff too, if anybody needs classes, they just changed it recently, and you got to like register to get in, I don't know what the NYPD.
Count me in too, for that one.
But I have, I have lots of the YouTube links and the links to take the, so if you guys want the courses, let me know at any time, I can give you the link, and you can take the course at any time, any of the past ones.
Nice not to have to drive an hour to get these things.
Planning Federation, this year, I mean, I know I'm new, but their webinars have been fabulous, like they really stepped up, I feel like, I mean, tell me if I'm wrong, and they've always been this great, but I feel like COVID, they've really stepped up with their trainings.
Well, this guy was very good, he really, very well organized, very clear, and he didn't feel like he was just reading a PowerPoint.
That's awesome.
This is Brian, I have a quick question, if I may, please?
Sure, go ahead.
We were talking about jacking up the fines for dumping a while back, and I'm just wondering if anything has happened with that, I think we're going to send.
I think Connor was working more on that, wasn't he, with the zoning revision committee?
Stuart, Stuart sent a letter to the town board.
Okay.
And we haven't heard back yet, he wanted clarification as to what the building department and the planning board position was in regard.
It was on the fill law, is that what the question's about, is it something else?
That's correct.
Fill law, yeah. So we're waiting for an answer back on that clarification.
Okay.
Okay.
Bill told me that he did speak to you.
Yeah, Stuart wants me to give him language to revise the law.
Okay. All right, we skipped over adopting draft resolutions, before we give the floor to Judith.
There you go, I lost them.
Melissa.
So convenient, okay, so first of all, would Stuart be so kind as to make a motion to adopt the resolution for Miller and Donahue?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the planning board adopt the resolution as drafted on planning board case number 20-0187A for Miller, Donahue, and Mellert.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now for Melissa.
All right.
Present us with our favorite SDR list.
Here we go, SUP number 20-054210 Garrison Road Shady LLC, SUP number 20-0543 Audrey Huffenreuter, SUP number 20-0546 Stephen M. Taub and Robert Marsh Lindley, SUP number 19-0513 precaution Cecily Sashi, SUP number 20-0566 Alan Redvinsky and Courtney Dudley, SUP number 20-0568 Greg and Leanne Brodsky, SUP number 20-0569 Robert B. Ross, SUP number 20-0570 Ronald Cohen, SUP number 20-0571 Maria Gia Aradondo, SUP number 20-0572 Eric C. Rubenstein and Kirby Levers, SUP number 19-0514 Alan Seeger, SUP number 20-0573 Marie Dominique DeCock, SUP number 20-0574 Karen Fiden and David Elsasser, SUP number 20-0575 Wenchey Hu, SUP number 20-0576 Vicky J. and Eric R. Wilmer.
All right, so I'll make a motion that the planning board approve all of the applications, especially use permits in each of the cases that Melissa just recited.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Melissa, for all the work you saved us from doing. Thank you.
Melissa.
Thank you for your work on doing the address list, and Judy for mapping it as well, it's very useful, I think.
No, I'm very excited about it, I'll work more on that next week, I've just, I've been swamped.
I know it's not exciting, but it's helpful, thank you.
No, it is exciting, because I think this is going to be great when we have to say like, here, look.
This is where it is.
Okay.
John has been trying to say something for about the last 20 minutes.
John, you have my attention.
No, I wanted to simply ask you, excuse me, if you were going to do an update to requirements for the board of members?
We're all good, the Stuart, we kind of just assumed that everyone was okay with Stuart being the planning board chair, I did anyway, is the planning board all good with Stuart continuing his vice chair position?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, how about educational requirements for each of us?
Oh, I have to tell you, I have emailed you all separately, because I don't want to embarrass some of you. About a month ago, I emailed everyone separately.
Well, who would be embarrassed, the people who have maps?
John, you are my shining star, because you don't have any continuing ed requirements, because at some point you took a ton.
I know that, but I'm just, you know, I didn't know if they expired at this point.
You're golden for this year, you don't have anything to worry about this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and everyone else I have emailed you separately, but I have to tell you, I appreciate all that you do and all the efforts that you put into this.
Can I just raise one point, Peter, before we go on the fill law issue? I'm a little concerned about getting into drafting the fill off revision for the town board, because they're putting responsibilities on the planning board that I don't know if the planning board has considered whether we want to take them on or not, and it's not really my role as a planning board member to do that, and I don't really want to do that, certainly without the planning board knowing what the problems are. For example, the way they've structured this draft law, the building department has primary role in reviewing these applications for excavation permits, and they go into certification requirements for the quality of fill that's going into the ground and so on, and how clean it is, and where it came from, and all that, and the town board's draft says that that all is done by the building department, except in those matters where we are otherwise involved with site plan modifications, whatever other applications we have, so there's an excavation in those, then they said in those cases, we do it. But what do we know about fill cleanliness and all those technical things that really is within the building department's expertise? I'm not comfortable, you know, going along with that on my own at this point.
Maybe we need, Stuart, we need to draft a memo for the planning board to approve and to say just that, and maybe take the planning board out of it, because the building department has expertise in fill where the planning board does not.
Well, the other thing that Stuart's point is, it's always been in the code, filling and excavating are always been in that code, and it always goes through the building department, any excavation of filling is, has to be approved.
Peter, do you think it's necessary for planning board attorney to review this law?
Well, again, it's almost like the SDR thing, it's already on the books, filling and excavating, you have to get a permit to do that, no matter what.
But the mess here is because of, Earl is putting stuff in Willow, right?
But you need a permit to do that.
Why are they doing a new law?
Did he have a permit?
Excavate without a permit.
Why are they doing a new law then, if it's already on the books?
Question. Always, there's always been a bed and breakfast rule on the books, you know, so why do we need a new? But, but I don't know.
Enforce the old one, so we have to write a new one, wait a minute.
I mean, the only thing I know would come before the planning board is wetlands and water course permits, because there is a question of filling and excavating within buffer areas, but that's very rare that we would get that, but.
If I may, Stuart, I agree, I don't think you should be put in that position, so, and I, you know, I just recall saying that, hearing that this law had no teeth, and we were complaining about that, and we wanted something that did have more oomph to be able to enforce this, and I just don't understand why this can't be done.
Well, that, my complaint wasn't that it didn't have teeth, my complaint was that the role of the planning board versus the role of the building inspector wasn't really clear, what is her responsibility and what is ours, it really is not, it's muddied, rather than being clarified, and so that was the complaint that I had about it. But do we have a liaison to the town board, if not, I guess we could do a memo, present it to all the planning board members, and if we have consensus about it, then we could send it out.
Or could we recommend that they simply refer it to a planning attorney and send it to Rundek?
Or the town board attorney, I don't know.
Yeah, but it seems to me that there's a little smell here of Bill trying to get legal advice without having to pay for it.
No, there's more than a smell.
Bill told me he drafted, Bill said he drafted it, you know, so I don't even know if he used the town board attorney, probably didn't, but I don't know, I don't have the information, but I'm not comfortable doing clarifying work on something such as this, where I don't even know if it's our business to be getting into the technical reviews of the fill and all that that's referred to in the law, it's certainly beyond my expertise.
This point, and you shouldn't be, actually, I guess if the law's being changed, it gets reviewed by the state anyway, I believe.
Well, it's town board's business.
The town board should spring for a few bucks and send it to an attorney.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
I agree for me to say no to that.
So the last thing we have here is that Judy's got some mapping that she wants to show us regarding critical environmental areas, I'm not sure what she's got, but.
I wanted to show you what we got from, from the, what we got from the natural resources, because it's full of information, and a lot of it's going to be relevant to critical resources, this is just the basic map, this is just our ground with the, with the roads turned on, and what I want to do is just walk you through very quickly the kinds of information that we got from DEC in that natural resources inventory, so that you get an idea of how useful it might be, I'm just going to turn things on and show you what they are, and that will be all, and it won't take very long. These two are city land, I had already done some of that, but this is, you know, more authorized, because it's people who know what they're doing who did it.
Dark green or the light green?
That is New York City land clip, and this is a different New York City land clip, but the two of them together add up to New York City land, New York City and state land, I should say.
State, yeah.
Then we've got this, this little thing with the gridding, which is forest tax law program parcels, don't ask me, because I don't know what that is.
Fisher Forest Act, the people get a lower rate of taxation when they put things in the Fisher Forest Act, they have to play by the rules.
This is agricultural districts, agricultural exemptions, prime farmland soils, prime farmland if drained, farmland of statewide importance, that's the farmland stuff. So I'm just turning on groups of things that belong together, so you can see, we haven't gotten to actually the most exciting ones. Then we have a far, climate flow zone, which I'm not sure, yeah, okay, I change it so you can see it, climate flow zone is as climate changes, where animals are likely to be moving in response to climate change. We are a very important district here, here is core forest. There's a lot of Here is an area where rare bats, let me see if I can get that to turn on. That's an area where rare bats forage. This is important bird area. This is significant biodiversity.
Whoa.
This is rare terrestrial animals.
Like what?
I don't know, but they're not wetland animals, because that's a separate thing, here is wetland animals.
That's part of my curiosity.
I don't know where the wetland animals are, but there's not very much of them, because it's pretty small, I think if I zoom in close, I'll be able to see that, so let me zoom into the, yeah. That's a small area, but those are rare wetland animals, and they're right, not far from here, from me, actually. Some things don't show up on the big map, because they're just too, they're just too many of them, they're too small. Some things don't show up on the big map because they're just too, there are just too many of them. They're too small.
Terrestrial animals are animals that live predominantly or entirely on land as compared with aquatic animals which live predominantly or entirely in the water or amphibians which rely on a combination of aquatic and terrestrial habitats.
But what exactly they are, I may be able to find out some by looking at...
Apparently, what I see, it could be a bug or a giraffe.
Yeah, they're not telling me because there's nothing in the attribute table. Sometimes the Hudsonia stuff, if you turn on the attribute table, you can see like the names of streams and things like that.
Examples, cats, ants, or spiders.
Well, whatever they are, they have a wide area. This is matrix forest. As you can see, that's high. These are forest linkage zones. I don't know how that shows. What does that look like?
Not lit up.
Well, maybe we don't have any in town. Because what I did was I clipped out just the woodstock areas of things. But this is something that ought to show if, let me try putting a different color on it just to see if it changes it. No, we don't have any. All right. This is an area of intermittent woodland pools. Do you see those little blue dots everywhere? That's where frogs and things like that breed, and we have some of that information from Hudsonia, too. This is intermittent woodland pool conservation zone. This is wetland buffers approximate. This is streams. We already have them, but now we're turning them on with NRI. Here is regulated freshwater wetlands. Somebody is talking who probably ought to be muted. John? Okay. Now, this is so Hudsonia wetlands, which is fairly similar. But they gave me the Hudsonia ones in addition to giving their own. So I'm turning all of those off. Now we're getting to very poorly and poorly drained. You see the brown stuff? Somewhat poorly drained. Regulated dams. Red, all those red diamonds, triangles, those are regulated dams.
Regulated dams?
Yep. DEC regulated dams.
These are like natural dams or...
I doubt it. I think they're probably artificial. Let me see if there's anything in the attribute table. Well, it just gives me the addresses.
Okay.
Federal ID. Cooper Lake Dam and West Dyke, Kingston Reservoir.
Old Saw Mills, Water Mills.
Yep. So that's all identified in the attribute table, so we could look at individual ones if we needed to. This is road stream crossings that have aquatic animals. And the red ones mean the animals can't get through, so they're like colts and things like that that are preventing animals from passing. Reduced AOP is the orange ones with the crosses on them. And full AOP are the green ones where they can get through without trouble. And there's a separate one that is simply road stream crossings. Obviously, some of them are the same. And when I look at what those codes mean, they're priorities. So critical importance are the red ones. And again, if I turn on the attribute table, mothcap, I'm going to have to look up what mothcap is because that's where those ratings come from. Then we have significant flood hazard. And then we have, oh, and is that, no, that is broken down. Then we have Cooper Lake Reservoir watershed. And then we have Beaver Kill Management Units, which are all along here. And they have different labels and different things that are on a different piece of map. I don't have, well, this is all coded to some document. And this is the watershed for Beaver Kill. And this is just Beaver Kill. So what is this? This is just the kill itself. And these are priority sites on the Beaver Kill. And there is information that can be dug out, some of it from, I think, other documents to tell us what all this means. But just to say, this is stuff that's significant. Then we've got Little Beaver Kill. And Stony Creek. And Sawkill. And Plattekill. And Stony Clove. This is all watersheds. And Esopis. I didn't turn it on. There we go. Esopis is down here. And Ashoken Direct Streams, which are those stars. No, they're not. I don't know what, oh, that's on here.
The purple.
On here. No, the purple is the township, is the hamlet. That's just the hamlet. And we have riparian buffers. And I'm going to turn off some of this because it's getting to be confusing. You see that if we have a specific area that we are concerned about, we can turn on and off these different things to find out what they tell us. All right, what is on here now is riparian buffers. You see the green? And these are trout streams with the water quality indicated. The yellow is trout streams and the green is spawning streams. And these are high-quality cold water, and obviously they agree to some extent with trout. These are unclassified streams. And then we get into our wellfields. And I think I'm going to zoom in because we're going to want to see this a little better. That is a, let's see, that's NRI wellfield number two. This is NRI wellfield number one. This is 2,000 gallon tank. This is a 1,000, a 1 million gallon tank. This here that is going on and off is 100,000 gallon tank. This is the, and I'm going to turn the tanks off. The wellhead protection area is this orange outline. The water supply protection area, oh, that's the purple. It was turned on. I didn't realize it. This is the updated water district. This is unconsolidated aquifers. And I'm going to turn off the water supply. Those are unconsolidated aquifers in that blue.
I noticed that they include the library road. There was information during a library case that it built on an aquifer.
Oh, there's aquifer all over town here. But these are unconsolidated aquifers. Then there's something called the Winkley Aquifer. Let me turn off the unconsolidated. Well, maybe that's not in town. That's the trouble with working with these huge, I mean, they gave me these, some of these things go all up and down the eastern seaboard. This is FEMA flood hazard. The bright blue. These are significant natural communities indicated by color. And the list here tells you the colors. I haven't opened up everything so we could see what everything was, you see. But some things are broken down by categories, and this is one of them. This is another one that's broken down by categories, and it's forest condition. So you can see that the 99, the top 1% is this dark purple. And then you get into lighter purple, which is less high quality. And when you get down to the reds around the middle of town, it's basically shot. It's not good. But we have a lot of very high-quality forest. Then we have ulster habitat core rank. Green is outstanding. Lighter green is very high. Yellow is high. Then there's medium, that's the orange, and general is the red. And there are some areas that just basically are not showing up at all. I guess down in the valleys, but they are all along the roads. You see that? So habitat. Then we have climate resilience. And this, when I clipped it, it was out of the entire eastern seaboard. Let me move out a little bit here. And if I open that one up so we can see what that is, far above average is dark green. Far below average is that brown. And so we are a very important resource. That's the bottom line of this.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
What does it mean to have climate resilience?
I think it means that as the climate changes, that the ecosystem there is likely to be able to adapt.
Okay.
It's a good question. Then we have steep slopes. For some reason, I don't think it's got the whole town. Oh, I know why because this is not actually, let's see, what did I do wrong here? Steep slopes, okay. Climate resilience goes outside of Woodstock because it was hard to clip it. So it's a big square that includes all of Woodstock. But this part here is a clip that's just Woodstock, and it shows steep slopes, those orange and different colors. And again, that has a score. Those reds are more than 25% slopes. I mean, grade. And then we are down to the very last one, which is the NRI climate flow zone, and don't ask me what it means because I don't know.
Well, that's very interesting.
I thought you would find it interesting. That's why I wanted to show it to you because there is obviously a huge amount of information here that's relevant to...
Well, we're interested to see, Melissa, I believe Ingrid is still planning to have a seminar coming up next month.
April, right? Is it March or April?
Uh huh. And that is in regard to critical environmental areas, correct?
Yes.
At some point, I assume we're going to find out what makes a critical environmental area. And then how much of it we can try to protect.
But I think you can see just from the data that they have given us in these maps that we've probably got a lot of critical environmental area in the town.
That's basically what New Paul's went through. And they had all of their town in that, and now they were trying to get it to workable spaces. But we'll be working on it. Fantastic, Judy. Thanks for that information. I'm glad you have it and it's available to the town to look at.
Yeah, let me tell you that when I get from Bill, whenever it happens.
I brought that up today.
In a flash drive, I will put all the original files, which includes sometimes all of Ulster County, sometimes all New York State, sometimes the entire eastern sea for climate resilient. I'm not kidding. So then if somebody wants all of them, they can get plus a map package that I made that is what you just saw. It also has some of our stuff on it because it has the zoning and it has the different kinds of buildings and it has the Hudsonia data. And I saw no reason not to include all of that. So anybody who has the skills and the software and wants to look at that can just go into who designed this and make a copy.
How big a flash drive?
What do we do?
We ordered them in 28 gigs because the full material that we got from Ingrid is big. But I think that the part that is just the map package I made is about 30 gigs. It's not crazy.
Okay. Anybody have other questions? John, questions?
No, thank you. I love the presentation.
It's very useful.
Now, you can't really use the maps without ArcGIS unless somebody who has ArcGIS makes you a PDF. But it's very easy to make PDFs. Five-second operation.
Well, Judy...
And on the town website, if you look at the Hudsonia mapping, it's PDF, and you can zoom in on it and look at it.
Yeah, pretty far. I'm using the same software to map, I mostly map the parking. I have, I've mapped handicap parking, parking lots, and street parking within the hamlet as part of complete streets. And that eventually will, I hope, go on the town board, on the town website.
Well, can I ask a question? So the maps that you just showed us, are those available on the town website?
No.
Some of the stuff...
That's parts of it.
Yeah.
Parts of it that have been converted into PDFs. It is extremely easy to do PDFs.
If I were to come over to your house with a flash drive, could I leave with a copy?
You could leave with a copy, which you wouldn't be able to unless you bought the software and learned how to use it. Or you could say to me, give me a PDF of that.
Oh.
I could do that.
Okay.
Okay, one of the other things, Judith, that is going to be very interesting to do with the software when we review the comprehensive plan and the build-out analysis. When Saratoga Associates did the comprehensive plan, they determined how many lots were available to be developed in the town. And they did it by taking R3, R5, R8 zoning lots and took out steep slopes, took out wetland, and came up with a figure of acreage or lots that could still be developed, which I believe was around 1,200 lots left. But that's something we'd like to see in a map like that.
Well, something we could probably very easily do, there is also the question of whether these should be developed.
Right, right. But this was, in other words, however Saratoga did it, I guess, unless we can get access to their records, I guess we're going to have to kind of make our own to look at every lot that can be developed.
Do we have it in any form like paper form?
In the comp plan itself, they don't show, they just show the numbers. They don't actually...
Because what we could do, you know, what I did not turn on was the parcel map. But of course, the parcel map is the same one we use all the time.
Right.
So if we know which parcels by SBL or whatever they consider buildable...
That's what I want to do. I want to get in touch with Saratoga and see if we can get their worksheet on that and save us some libraries.
If we have the SBLs, then I could assemble a map like I'm making the one of the STR locations.
That would show us buildout, you know, what the possibility is.
Not hard to do. If we have SBLs for what they think is buildable, we could do that.
So board members, anybody have any other questions or issues for tonight's meeting? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much for a good meeting. And see you next time.
Thank you, everybody. A good night.
Good night, y'all.